Good evening. Welcome to our first and second to last meeting for 2024, first in December. I want to apologize in advance. I'll be leaving after our vote on Grand Park. I have a flight to Vegas tonight for trying to make a pitch on a company moving its headquarters to Westfield. So I will be departing here very quickly, but my chief of staff, Deputy Mayor, sorry, Daniel Carey Tom will take the reins after I leave. If I get by to stand for pledge allegiance, followed by the invocation by Pastor Austin Rifle.
My pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America, to the republic which stands on nation under God, indivisible, with mercy and justice for all.
That's great. Almighty God and most merciful heavenly Father, we bow before you this evening, this day, a day that you have made, and we rejoice and we're glad in it, acknowledging you as our Creator, Creator of heaven and earth, also the one who upholds all things by the word of your power. You are the King of kings and the Lord of lords, and we come to you tonight knowing that you draw near to your people in grace and mercy. We thank you for the blessings that you have poured out upon this city, the city of Westfield, upon its peoples and leaders and its opportunities to flourish that you have provided. We acknowledge that every good gift, every perfect gift comes from your hand, and so we seek your guidance. We also seek your favor. As we begin this meeting, we pray that you would grant wisdom to the council members as they deliberate and make decisions for the good of this community. We pray, Lord, that decisions would be marked by integrity and humility and a desire to promote justice and peace and the flourishing of all in this city. Your word tells us that righteousness exalts a nation and that you delight in justice and mercy, and so we pray that this council would reflect these values, serving as stewards of the authority that you've entrusted, oh Lord. Would you grant that their hearts would be kept from selfish ambition or partiality, that you would give them a deep concern for the common good, and so we pray for the citizens of this city, for families and schools and businesses and organizations. Would you bless them with safety and prosperity and the spirit of cooperation? We thank you, Lord, for the ability that we have to come before you, praying now in the name of Jesus Christ, who is our Lord. Amen.
Thank you. Appreciate that. President Tam, would you like to run the meeting, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Can we note the presence of the quorum?
John Dart.
Yes.
Joe Deppner.
Yes.
Patrick Tam.
Yes.
Noah Heron.
Yes.
Chad Huff.
Yes.
Kurt Wanniger.
Yes.
Victor McCarty.
Yes.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes, assuming that everyone has had the opportunity to fully review the minutes of the previous meeting. We have a motion in a second.
After reviewing the minutes of last month's meeting, our last meeting, I make a recommendation for approval.
Second, the motion?
We have a motion made by Councilor Wanniger, seconded by Councilor Dart. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we call the roll?
All right, I'm learning a new system here. Just trying to catch up.
I think we all are on the website phone.
Okay. Victor McCarty.
Yes.
Patrick Tam.
Yes.
Kurt Wanniger.
Yes.
John Dart.
Yes.
Joe Deppner.
Yes.
Noah Heron.
Yes.
Chad Huff.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda this evening is the approval of claims, assuming that everyone's had the ability to fully view those. I need a motion in a second.
Motion to approve the claims?
Second.
We have a motion made by Councilor McCarty, a second by Councilor Wanniger. Seeing no other discussion, may we call the roll?
Patrick Tam.
Yes.
Kurt Wanniger.
Yes.
John Dart.
Yes.
Joe Deppner.
Yes.
Noah Heron.
Yes.
Chad Huff.
Yes.
Victor McCarty.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. This evening, we have, we do have public comments this evening. Director Todd?
Yep, we have two cards currently. Jeff Kirk, followed by James Benj.
Mr. Kirk, if you want to step up to the lectern, we can start. Jeff, it's great to see you this evening. I know we've talked, but just a friendly reminder to everyone for three minutes. Sorry.
Thank you, sir. Gentlemen, thanks for taking some time to listen to me. My name is Jeff Kirk. I live at thirteen fifty-nine Annapolis Drive over in Centennial. I've been a resident of Westfield since two thousand thirteen. I moved down here from Kokomo. There's a property behind my residence at fourteen, I'm sorry, one four nine three nine Didra Road. It used to be Pettijohn Construction. It was a concrete construction company. When I moved here and when I looked at my house, it was, for all intents and purposes, a vacant property. Mr. Pettijohn retired a number of years ago, and it had pretty much abandoned. In two thousand eighteen, the residents of Centennial that surround that property were notified by, it's supposed to be by certified letter, but it eventually made it to everybody, that a gentleman by the name of Jeff Keelich, who was a farmer up by Sheridan, was interested in purchase, or had purchased the property, not interested in, he had actually purchased it, and was wanting to rezone it for a landscaping business. It's literally in my backyard, as it is with my neighbor here, and we fought it tooth and nail, and the zoning board turned him down. I believe he subsequently filed suit against the city, against the zoning board, and an agreement was reached where he could only operate a construction, a concrete construction company, which he has since done. My biggest problem with the concrete
Mr. President, it's been three minutes, just so you know. I'm sorry. You're at three minutes. Sorry.
And thank, thank you. We could continue this conversation, but I greatly appreciate you bringing it to the full council and frankly, the entire city's attention as well. So thank you.
...all the way back on that east side of the property have grown over the tree, over the fence, so far over, it was like twenty-some feet long, that was in front of the door, the gate of my, my fence, and to the point where you had to be careful how you opened it, it would hit. So I went, talked to him about it, and he said he'd take care of it. He never did. I finally hired a company, come out, cut that limb down, and I chopped it up, and I should have given his wood back, but I didn't. But the sound issues are, are for real. There are other issues over there that Jeff didn't get a chance to tell you about. A building with no footing, gas tanks sitting on the ground, and so those are some serious safety hazards as well, as long, as well as several, look like junk, used cars on one side, some empty tires along the fence where I live, were just laying there. I'm sure there's water in there, mosquitoes, rats, whatever might be there, but some cleaning up needs to be done there, I would think, so. And I'm here just to tell you my half or my third of what, what he was going to tell you. So, thank you very much.
And thank you, Mr. Ben. Director Todd, do we have any other public comments this evening? Okay, thank you. Moving on to old business this evening, we have Resolution twenty-four one thirty-two, which is the approval of the GPSC to operate Grand Park and authorize the city to enter into a public-private partnership agreement. This evening, we have Mr. Deck making a presentation.
Okay, for the record, Matthew Deck, Director of Facilities and Events, here to present, as you mentioned, Resolution twenty-four dash one thirty-two. Wanted to start with some thank yous, and I have to say that I know I and several folks in this room are very excited to be here tonight. This is really the culmination of almost three years' worth of work, and there are a lot of people to thank and just give a little bit of recognition to, and I'd like to start with the Grand Park team. The current team has been working under rather challenging circumstances for at least the last two years and perhaps beyond, and they have excelled and exceeded anyone's expectations under the leadership of Matt Trinian, and so really would like to thank them wholeheartedly. Would like to thank the Operations Review Committee, five individuals that spent countless hours combing through the different options that were presented for Grand Park. Would like to thank the current city administration under Mayor Willis and all the time they've spent in making sure that we have the best agreement possible, and would like to thank the past administration under Mayor Cook for really getting this whole process going and putting this in front of us. I'd like to thank the city council, as I know the seven of you have probably spent more time than you would have imagined in executive sessions and city council meetings, and just really making sure that you utilized your knowledge and expertise in making sure that we had the absolute best deal possible. We're really honored to be working with an organization such as GPSC, and they have been wonderful to work with through this rather complicated process. Would like to thank them. And then would like to thank Taft Law, Fegery Drinker, and Ice Miller for all of their inputs and all of their work, and I have bothered Cam Starnes more than he would probably like over the last eleven months, and Bondry Consulting for their financial input through all of this. So we've really had a lot of expert information going into this agreement. So why GPSC? GPSC's bid was the only one that allowed retaining ownership of Grand Park while an operator used their own resources to take the park into the future. GPSC is a joint venture between Bullpen Tournaments and Indy Sports and Entertainment, who own the Indy Eleven, both of which have the depth of knowledge and understanding of Grand Park and have contributed to its success in the past. GPSC also brings the development and real estate expertise of Keystone Realty Group. Government will never run a business as efficiently and effectively as the private sector. The business of sports and entertain... The business of sports and entertainment is all about relationships. The city could never replicate the deep relationships that GPSC has with the NCAA, FIFA, Big Ten Conference, Horizon League, IHSAA, United Soccer League, Major League Soccer, and MLB. And Grand Park has already benefited from these connections, and it has been selected as a base camp site for the twenty twenty-six World Cup. GPSC brings an exciting vision for the park and the expertise to ensure Grand Park remains the premier destination for youth sports. GPSC will be making guaranteed annual payments that over thirty years will generate over one hundred and eighty-four million dollars for the city. GPSC will also be contributing thirty-eight million dollars into a shared escrow fund that can be used for capital improvements and other agreed-upon projects within Grand Park. A guaranteed revenue stream is part of the strategic plan to create the Grand Park District, which includes a total investment of approximately two billion dollars. This includes land acquisition, winter sports components, structured parking, hotel with convention center, economic incentive packages for corporate headquarters, the development of a sports tech hub, and the construction of a championship multi-sport stadium. This will provide a continuation, or excuse me, GPSC will provide a continuation of Westfield's residents receiving free admission. GPSC will provide a continued partnership with WYSI, the youth sports organization here in Westfield, with an increase in diamond and field usage. This will also allow the city to unwind difficult contracts that would be impossible to do with another organization. By doing this, this diverts all business risk associated with Grand Park to the private sector. GPSC will be providing a financial guarantee for the operations fee payment. And to highlight some of the recent changes that we have made per council's request, the agreement has been shortened from forty down to thirty years. This will include an initial ten-year term and four five-year extensions. We have instituted a cap of net revenues back to the guarantors in the event of a default. We have added date ranges for all city events to be held at the Grand Park Sports Campus. We have added a table indicating the escrow contributions from both parties, and we have instituted a cap on PSDA revenues that can be credited to the GPSC matching escrow contribution. With all that being said, we would really appreciate your vote, and I'd like to turn it over to Mayor Willis for a few comments.
Thank you, Matthew. And Matthew's already covered some of the thank yous, but I'll go back through it here real briefly. Obviously, we want to thank Mayor Cook for the vision of Grand Park. What a gutsy move, quite frankly. Now that I'm sitting in that, in his seat, I, I don't know if I'd have had the guts to go down the path he went, but it certainly has paid big dividends for our city. I do want to thank the five people who sat on the committee to select GPSC and where we're at today. Chuck Lehman, I see you in the back, Larry Clarino, Brian Toma Michael, Troy Patton, and Danny Moyer. They put a lot of time, it was citizens-led, and I appreciate all the efforts that they've made. I want to thank Jeremy Lawler, our former chief of staff, put a ton of work into making sure that MOU was ready to go for transition into the new leadership. I want to thank our staff, quite frankly, at Grand Park, Matthew Trinian. You can't imagine what he went through over the last twelve months, where, you know, this thing had some ebb and flows and ups and downs, and we weren't sure we were even going to get to the finish line. There were times we were thinking the whole thing was going to collapse, and here he is trying to manage a staff of fifteen, twenty people who weren't sure who they were going to work for in the next few months, let alone where their benefits were going to come from, where their paycheck was going to come from. Incredibly stressful, and he just handled it massively, and, and certainly appreciative of that. I'm appreciative of my staff, Matt, Danielle, Kaitlyn, Janelle, so many people have their fingerprints on this agreement, and I'm here to tell you, it was very, very stressful, at least for me. I lost a lot of sleep getting to this point, and I couldn't have done it without the staff and their contributions. Obviously, Cam Sterns from the city side was an amazing attorney in guiding us through this process. And then I want to thank city council. I don't think people appreciate what we handed city council. This is by far the biggest decision that our city has had to weigh in on, at least in modern-day history. This park and this agreement is going to transform the city of Westfield beyond what happens at the, that four-hundred-acre sports campus. And these seven gentlemen came in, took office, and were not a part of anything that was done up to that point, and then plopped in their laps and said, please vote on this because we need to get this to the finish line. Incredibly stressful, quite frankly, an unfair request on these seven individuals, and they have given a ton of time and energy and thought into where we're at today. We haven't always seen eye to eye. There's been some heated conversations behind closed doors, but I appreciate the guidance all seven of you have provided me through this process. I think it's a great contract. It's not perfect. I, I wish it could be, but it's impossible. Quite frankly, we have as many hands in the cookie jars as we've had, and with the difficulty and complexity of this agreement, but I feel good. I think we're handing over a contract to our taxpayers that they can be proud of. Year one, folks, we're going to make two and a half times the revenue we've ever made at Grand Park. I think that's a pretty good deal. And I think when you look at the future and some of the plans that we have for Grand Park, we're going to take it to the next level, and this contract will be a very important piece of that. And then lastly, I want to thank GPSC, Ursula, Ken, your teams, a lot of thought and energy between you guys. You're taking a risk, and we appreciate you investing in us and trusting us and taking what has been, you know, the centerpiece of our city and guiding it to the next phase of its life, and quite frankly, taking it to levels we as a city could never get it, and we're super thankful for your partnership. With that all shut up.
Thank you, Mayor. Any council discussion this evening? Council Wanniger?
I'll, I'll start off by saying, Matt, congratulations on running the, running Grand Park the way you have and with past directors as well. As you had on one of your bullets' points earlier, basically, government cannot run it as well as what the private side can. And working for sixteen years in government, I understand that, and I see that, and working for now for private business, having that backing of other businesses behind it will provide a lot more opportunity. So basically, you've been operating Grand Park the way you have in a great way with one, one hand tied behind your back. So I appreciate that. Mayor and GPSC, thank you for your time for our council, for us to look at this. I know, Mayor, you wanted to vote on this in April, and then July, and then September, and now here we are in December. I appreciate your patience with the seven council members, and I want to thank the council members too for everybody's diverse background and input into this as well. Got a great group of council members up here with a lot of different backgrounds that brought a lot of different viewpoints to this that, as the mayor said, it's, I think it's a pretty good contract. It might not be perfect, but I think it's something that we will be happy with and, and move forward with. So, thanks.
Thank you, Council Dart, count, excuse me, Council Wanniger, now Council Dart.
Sure. As, as Mayor Willis stated, we took an MOU that was agreed to at the end of December of two thousand and twenty-three and turned it into a ninety-page agreement, and that just doesn't happen overnight, and it takes a huge amount of effort and individuals involved to, to pull that together. But, you know, from a council standpoint, we, we oftentimes dividing conquer on projects and initiatives, and I want to thank Councilor Tam and Councilor Deppner, who dug in deep. I mean, we were all involved, but they really dug in deep with the attorneys and, you know, encouraged us to go page by page by page in this agreement to make sure that it was right for the city and right for GPSC. So again, thanks to my fellow counselors and everybody involved in this process.
Thank you. Council Dart, any other discussion? Council Deppner has to have something. I have questions and clarifications because I always do. Matt, can you just explain for those in the audience and as well as those listening, what a PSDA is, or ICAN, or the mayor, and what the significance of that is?
No, absolutely. So, it's a professional sports development area. It's a designated geographic area that creates a special taxing district to help fund sports-related projects.
Yeah, just so the public understands, that's on tax growth as well on state sales tax. So the state government views this sales tax, whether right or wrong, I'm not advocating for this, but they view it as their state's tax. So we do not have a PSDA at this time in, in Westfield. You will already have seen, if you've been paying attention to the newspapers, that both Noblesville and Westfield will be pursuing a PSDA language for respective projects in their two communities. Our good friends, Fishers, beat us to the punch. There's only, currently in Indiana law, there's only one allowed per county, and that, frankly, Fishers beat everyone to the punch. Nothing wrong with that. They just took action before anyone else, but that is a legislative initiative at the mayor, and frankly, our partners at GPSC and others will be pursuing, in addition to working with Mayor Jensen in Noblesville respectfully, as he pursues one for his community as well. Also, not buried in this document, there's also talk about performance metrics and the ability to evaluate those, and then frankly, there's reference to the city. It is contained in there, and I encourage people to take a look at those. At the same time, there's consideration and expectation in January where you'll see a resolution or ordinance, depending upon what our infamous city legal counsel and then also Cam and others advise us, to create what, the equivalent of a capital improvements board. What is a capital improvements board? That is similar to what manages the day-to-day business and the performance metrics really of what we call today Lucas Oil Stadium, as well as Indians and the Game Bridge and so forth. But that would be community-led. We do have a Westfield Sports Commission that the mayor does appoint as well, but that is something that for the council is very important. It also provides GPSC, it takes a little politics and four-year election cycles out of their business a little bit, which frankly, we have to kind of look at this from both sides of the table, and that's... sides of the table, and that's something that the council, the mayor, and frankly, obviously, GPSE also rightfully looked at as well, as they look at making significant investments of their own at the park as well. We think that's a wise choice, and frankly, we have very talented citizens that live in the community of Westfield, have tremendous experience, that is very similar in nature in what we'd be looking for as well. And you can look at the Westfield Sports Commission that's already instituted, constituted today, that you even see some of that as well. Matt, I would like to thank you because I probably have tested your blood pressure more than a few times, almost purposely because it's almost kind of fun. But at the same time, and all truth be said, every single counselor here had very great viewpoints. All are valid. Some really know how to drive a hard bargain, otherwise known as All Seven. At the same time, the mayor, and I've had some few heated exchanges that my sons even overheard, and they were like, who was that? And I said, well, I was the mayor, and they were like, Dad, aren't you friends with him? I'm like, yeah, I am. But at the same time, I would encourage folks to take a look at it. It is a complicated document, but also it was distilled into ninety short pages, but it is also written, thankfully, courtesy of many attorneys, in a manner which I think a lot of people can understand, which I greatly appreciate. Grand Park is Westfield's calling card. You can go anywhere in the country and potentially even the world and tell them that you live in Westfield. They'll look at you and go, isn't that where Grand Park is? They know Grand Park as much as they know Westfield. And I firmly believe with our partners in the room, many of which are sitting here this evening, that that only will be strengthened and continued. The comment that Mr. Deck made earlier about private business being able to run these types of projects and efforts to be more efficient than government is a no-brainer. Now, the devil's in the details, and those are the details that we tried to pay attention to. I also think Counselor Wanniger and others had correctly stated, we don't also love every word, chapter, and verse in this agreement, but I guarantee you that the people in the back room don't either. So collectively, we found some agreeable format on that process, which is a tough one. This also took a full year, and this was started by Mayor Cook and his administration. Many accolades were given earlier. I would, I think all of us would only second every single one of those. But I do want to thank the mayor. The mayor is militarily trained and is used to giving commands, and there are seven counselors that don't take any commands. So, those are the pieces that we have some fun with. Internally, you see meetings where we've worked out for countless hours, weeks, months, and in this case, effectively a year. Is there any further discussion this evening? Seeing none, we need a motion and a second?
It would be a vote on the resolution.
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 24-132, approval of the GPSE to operate Grand Park and authorize the city to enter into a private, public-private partnership agreement.
Second, a motion?
A motion made by Counselor Wanniger, a second by Counselor Dart. Seeing no other discussion, may we call the roll?
Kurt Wanniger?
Yes.
Clicked the wrong button, sorry. Do it on paper. John Dart?
Yes.
Joe Deppner?
Yes.
Noah Heron?
Yes.
Chad Huff?
Yes.
Victor McCarty?
Yes.
Patrick Tam?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Can we applause? Thank you. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
I'll get some sleep now.
Thanks. The next order of business is Ordinance 2447, which is amending the provisions in the Westfield, Washington Township UDO regarding mobile food vending. This evening, we have a presentation by Ms. Lauren Gillingham Teague.
I'll give the room a second.
Quite all right.
So this item is not nearly as exciting as the Grand Park, but you can humor me. For the record, Lauren Gillingham Teague with the Community Development Department. The item before you tonight, or rather, the items before you tonight are the adoption con, is the adoption consideration for the proposed mobile food vehicle vending policy, which combines Ordinance 2447 and Ordinance 2467, the two items of old business remaining, into a cohesive mobile food policy. So first up, Ordinance nineteen, or excuse me, 2467, the business license part. This will be administered by Community Development and will be required for all mobile food vendors operating within the city. So, just like the mobile food vending permit required by the Health Department, this covers details that are just omitted from their review, things like the vehicle's registered, the operator's a licensed driver, that they hold insurance, and pay taxes. And then this also establishes more recourse for operators found to be in violation. Previously, it was a little bit vague. So, this is required for all vendors from the city. Going along with that is its sister ordinance, 2447, which adds provisions to our UDO to actually regulate and establish rules and limitations on mobile food vending and gives the responsibility of administration back to the Community Development Department, where previously it was left up to council. So, some of these limitations include restrictions on signage, hours of operation, location, not being in the right-of-way, not interfering with any sidewalks or trails, and then also restricting the proximity to brick-and-mortar restaurants and Grand Park and Park Street. Kind of scrolling down here, there's a quick flow chart kind of explaining what scenarios will and won't need a permit. So, anyone serving alcohol by default will require this temporary use of a mobile food vending permit because there are special alcohol-related permits, as well as any, excuse me, anyone operating on an HOA event that doesn't already hold an HOA operation permit. So there are some special provisions built in for HOAs and other groups that host food trucks super often, just making it easier on them. They themselves can hold the permit for a period of three years, and the administration hiring of food trucks is left to their purview. They're free to make sure that their vendors have licenses and that they park in the correct place, but they don't have to involve the city every time they want to host another So that was kind of an overview. This has been before you a few times, so I don't want to go on and on about this. Happy to field any questions.
Thank you, Lauren. Any questions from council? Counselor McCarty?
I was just going to offer the same. I know I've answered questions over the weekend and the lead, over the weekend and weeks leading up to this, but if any of the rest of my fellow counselors have questions, please feel free to ask, and either Lauren and I can help out.
Victor, you and I talked. What was the final outcome there on the fees specifically with the HOA?
Yeah, so that'll come down to when the fee structure comes before us early next year. That's when we'll be able to address to either lower the 250 across the board because through this process, that was going to be one of our goals of how do we make it not so much of a big impact to our residents, but it's just a separate process that we're going to have to accomplish then.
Okay, so we're not voting on fee structure right now. That's coming back before us.
Yes.
That's correct. And just to note, that fee, so we elected to keep, at least at this time, the $250 fee across the board for all users, just because it's difficult to kind of say this certain group gets to pay less money when it's the same review regardless of who it's being done for.
Yeah.
And also, that $250 review fee is for three years, so it does equal out to a lower fee than others.
Just for your reference, the entire fee schedule for next year will be coming before you at the next city council meeting. That's for fire, community development, public works, and police.
Okay. That's one thing I would like to see. I know there are some exceptions in here for non-for-profits. HOAs are kind of a unique entity. They're not totally 501(c)(3)'s, but they're, they're not tax-exempt, but they are essentially non-for-profits in a way. So, I would like to see them exempted from the fee in some way.
So we have a couple of ordinances here. A lot of detail, a lot of great work that's been done, without question, but how do we, how does the city effectively communicate this, simply and effectively communicate this to the residents? Because, you know, could create confusion if it's not done in a simple manner, and so what's the vehicle to do that, and when will you start communicating?
Yeah, so the vehicle will work closely with Communications, ICANN, our HOA collective to really get the word out. And depending on when this is approved, if this is approved tonight, I was expecting to start the first of the year, working with those groups.
Much like how we came to this point, it'll be a collective process, mainly with now staff, the different departments, to be able to get that online portal to, for the transparency aspect, and then, again, especially with communications and the great effort with ICANN starting back up to communicate directly to the HOAs.
Probably needs to be communicated every single month, though, in the e-newsletter.
Yeah.
Just the repetitive nature will ultimately get to all the HOAs and everybody involved.
Any further discussion? Need a motion and a second. We need to take these two ordinances separately. So first, we need a motion for Ordinance 2447.
Motion to approve Ordinance 2447? Second?
We have a motion made by Counselor McCarty, second by Counselor Dart. Seeing no other conversation, may we call the roll?
John Dart?
Yes.
Joe Deppner?
Yes.
Patrick Tam?
Yes.
Noah Heron?
Yes.
Chad Huff?
Yes.
Kurt Wanniger?
Yes.
Victor McCarty?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Next, we need a motion and a second for Ordinance 2467.
Motion to approve Ordinance 2467?
A motion made by Counselor McCarty, second by Counselor Dart on Ordinance 2467. Seeing no other discussion, may we call the roll?
Joe Deppner?
Yes.
Patrick Tam?
Yes.
Noah Heron?
Yes.
Chad Huff?
Yes.
Kurt Wanniger?
Yes.
Victor McCarty?
Yes.
John Dart?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Moving on to new business this evening, we have Ordinance 2468, which is re-establishing a code of ordinances for the city of Westfield by re-codifying, revising, rearranging, and compiling ordinances into a complete simplified code. Tonight, we have a presentation by our city attorney, Ms. Glaser.
Sure. So, by law, the council shall codify the city's ordinances into a complete and simplified code, which removes all the typical whereas boilerplate clauses and just has the substance of the ordinance. I think it was the end of last year, the city hired American Legal Publishing to undertake re-codifying all the ordinances for us. That's in digital and hard copy book form. This was a really big lift for Marla in the Clerk Treasurers Office because it wasn't just the old ordinances that were online, it was finding everything that hadn't been ever submitted to that online code, so finding all of those documents. And then, anything legal would be flagged for me from either the Clerk Treasurers Office or American Legal Publishing. And so this ordinance here before you is just adopting this re-codification that American Legal Publishing has created. They've already provided us, I think, two books, and it's already available online. This also specifically carves out replacing things like the UDO. It actually links to that. And then really specific special ordinances, like appropriations, annexations, bonds, none of those are in this code, and those are all specifically exempted from being repealed and replaced. And I'm happy to discuss it more or answer any questions you guys might have.
Any discussion, just an ordinance this evening, so it's a first reading, introduction only? Any questions, discussion this time? We will move to Ordinance 2471, which is the Grand Millennium PUD. We have Mr. Collingwood here this evening to make a presentation as well.
Thank you, President. Members of the council, good evening. For the record, Ryan Collingwood with the Community Development Department. The site presented before you this evening is the proposed amendment to the Grand Millennium Center Plan Unit Development District, in which was originally established back in 2016 as Ordinance 16-51. The subject parcels make up approximately 17.1 acres and are located generally on the west side of Westfield Boulevard and generally south of the new library development, all within the Grand Millennium Development. The amendment proposal is to incorporate a new development site plan and character exhibits into the planned unit development. The amendment request includes three new buildings, two of which will have mixed-use components, as well as some other associated site improvements. In addition, the request outlines increasing the maximum unit count to permit an additional 20 housing units. The item is for you this evening for its first reading. The item is slated for a public hearing in front of the APC at their first meeting in the new year. David George of CRG Residential is present this evening for first reading. He plans to make an introductory presentation for you guys tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. George, great to see you.
Thank you very much. You've still got some things on the agenda, so I'll be brief. The main reason why I wanted to make just a quick presentation is we worked on the zoning last year, obviously, with the previous council, so I wanted to, out of courtesy, present a little bit further with the current council. I know Counselor McCarty was on the Plan Commission last year, so he's heard a little bit of this. So I wanted to go through that, and Kevin, there's a PowerPoint there. The other gentleman downloaded it. Real quick again, David George with CRG Residential here for Grand Millennium. So, in a nutshell, the project is really south of the current library, the new library, and east of 31, west of Westfield Boulevard, and then north of the Anna Kendall drain. And I wanted to share just a couple slides here in the beginning, just a little bit about our company, since we presented previously. I just wanted to share a little bit of the history, some projects that are nearby. Instead of renderings, I've got some renderings, but I also wanted to show you some pictures, kind of character examples that we'd move forward with. And again, this is intro, so when we come back, I'll have a little bit more detail. We'll go through it a little bit slower, but right now, I just wanted to share a couple things with you. The first would be our project team. Main thing there is our founder, Chris Reed, on the upper left, is still fully involved in the company, started here in Hamilton County and has grown over the last 35 years. Everybody listed there would be working on the project. Everybody has 20 to 30 years of experience. It sounds weird for me to say I have 30 years, but like my hair shows it. So, the main thing here is if you were to, if this moves forward, this is something that this same team would be working on it, and it's not another person would come in. So your staff would be well-versed to work with us. I wanted to share a couple different projects close by that, as we move forward, these are things that are close by enough that I could show you if you ever wanted to come and see some things, see some character examples live. So I wanted to share one for downtown Fishers. Just a couple highlights here. This is two different buildings. It's a mouse move, yeah. So we've got two different buildings. It's got a parking garage on both sides, and it's got an elevated deck, one, two, and then it's got three different decks for different people, for the residential, and we've got retail surrounding the buildings as well. And then the two historic buildings, it was important for the Fishers community to maintain and keep these, so as a part of the project, these have been revamped. And we've got a bagel shop going into one, and then we've got Penn and Beach that's now existing in the other one. And then next to that, we try to work with tenants And then next to that, we tried to work with tenants for the old nickel-plated restaurant. Were able to find someone, but someone wanted a new building, so that's going to be a Cafe Patisserie. And that's going to open in about, actually, a week, week to two weeks. This kind of shows you a little bit about some of the character things. So above the parking garage, we've got a couple of different areas for some deck space. So we've got seating, you've got fire pits, you've got pools, you've got some other amenities. And this will be very similar to what I'll share with you here in a minute for your community. And then also, in between, like I mentioned, we've got two different buildings. So a little bit, once the design started, you could kind of see these buildings come up, and it seems like you didn't want to have a disconnection, so we ended up working on a bridge. And now, both residents can be connected by that pedestrian bridge. Just real quick here, this is, we like to do win-wins in all communities. So we find something pretty much on each project. You never know in the beginning, but as you get going, you find one. In this particular one, we worked on a mural for the, really for the overall community, and that's been put in place. And then this is the Cafe Patisserie, which, this is a picture from me from about a week ago. So that plaza is just about done, and the landscaping's in. So it just kind of shows you how that started to take shape. In Greenwood, Indiana, this is a little bit south of where their downtown is. So on this drawing, whoops. So north is to the, to the right. This, sorry, it doesn't quite show up here. So this is an old school. This was the old gym. We worked with the city to rehab the gym, and then a new building was put on top of that. So that's a community center. And then we worked with the community for residential retail and structured parking. Very similar to what we'd like to propose for your downtown. This shows you a little bit more about that. So this is an actual picture where it's coming, coming into shape. And this is one that's open now, and just fine, fine-tuning touches are happening. Academy on Fourth and Newport, Kentucky. This is one block south of the river from Cincinnati. Had good back and forth with the community. They even, they gave us a key to the city at the end. But it's one that we worked back and forth with the city, and we were the selected developer to put this in place. The next one, real quick, and then we'll go into Westfield. But this one's, again, back in Fishers. Worked with the city. They were working on a roundabout project in 96 in Allisonville. So that's been put in place, but we did work on this big road that goes all the way through from 96 to Allisonville. And that connects with, Fishers has a park that is now coming into reality on the west side. It's about 125 acres, a lot of parks, a lot of ability to use the river, which is, now, hasn't been, you haven't been able to reach it. So there will be an ability to get back there, reach it and have some park space. So working hand-in-hand, this is a solution that we were able to work on with that community. Let's get closer to home. Again, like I mentioned before, this is your current library, and this is the MOB that's in construction now. So the property that we're here to discuss tonight is the property in red. So it's north of Anna Kendall, east of 31, west of Westfield Boulevard, and south of what I'll call the library. This is a site, as Ryan mentioned, was already zoned. It was zoned last year for specific uses, specific unit count. And we're adhering to all of that with the plan that we have. The only difference is we're moving the building, which I'll show you in a second. And then, just the way it laid out, there's a few more units. So the first thing I wanted to mention before I go to the main plan is this area is really the reason why I'm here today, because before, in the PUD from last year, this red area did not include the pond. So when we started to look at this a little bit further with the new mayor, the new administration, new economic development team, we wanted to put as much activity as we could at Park Street, because you have great activity going back and forth between the park. What, I know recently you had Park and Poplar come through. And so we wanted to put the building up in this area, so that's one reason for the request, and the unit count got just a little bit higher. The main thing here is, as Ryan mentioned, so we've got two different buildings that are multi-use. So we've got a structured parking on different ones. There will be some economic development items that will come forward. I'll hold that for that discussion. But the main thing is just to share with you the layout. This is the first level. So each of these buildings will be four levels. And then we have held space, and we're working on a development that would have another medical office building. It would be up to 60,000 square feet. The other thing that we've worked on with staff is a lot of different amenities. They want to make sure that you have a reason to drive to the area and not through the area. Also, you have a great connection between two main travel areas for pedestrians, and that's the Binland Trace. And then obviously, the Monon's not exactly there, but it's pretty quick to get there. So a lot of these areas where we show, and when I come back, I'll have a lot more detail as far as the amenity spaces and things like that. I've been guided by some of my meetings is town-run development, did some things with some of their outdoor amenities. So we're working to adhere to some of those ideas. Also, by putting the building here, the detention is now a combined detention. So it's actually more efficient to do it that way, but it doesn't quite, I think it does kind of show up there. We've got a path that goes all the way around, and we'll have exercise stations and some other things to give people a reason to come. We've got a couple of different areas along the new pond that we can have for fishing, for other, other things. You'll still have most of the tree line, so that you'll have a good setting, I think, for people coming off the trail. Again, it's multi-use, so we are a little bit above the current unit count that is in the PUD, so that's one of our requests. And then the other request is to come north. So let me show you two elevations, and then I'll wrap up. So the fir-, I'm sorry, I do have some amenities. So this is one, it kind of shows you a little bit when you have this blank space in the middle. This is what we would envision for the, for the area in between. So we've got a lot of different games. You've got some putting greens, you've got some cabanas, you've got the pool, you've got the, what we call an outdoor kitchen. These are the types of amenities that we would commit to for the project in, in the downtown. And also, I wanted to show a couple of other things here. This is the one that I mentioned in Greenwood. So I mentioned that just because it's one that I could, I could show you, anyone that would want to take a quick tour. But a couple of reasons why I put some of these here is on all of our projects, we're having a lot more coworking space, a lot more daytime areas. So we have separate offices for people to come. Not rent, but if you're a resident, then you can, you can reserve that space. And there are full offices where you'll have desks and some, we'll have small conference tables and others. We also have a concierge opening whenever you come in. You'll be greeted, and it's more of a hotel concept instead of rental. This was another concept on the previous slide for the, for the area. And then same thing with this. It just gives you a little bit more detail for that park setting. So this is an elevation looking from, if we were at the library looking south. So we've got a lot of masonry. We've worked at the economic development team. I've met, I know with some of the counselors, and we're going to dress this up a little bit more. I've taken some of your comments to heart. So I know that maybe one comment was a little bit sterile, so we'll try to jazz that up a little bit when we come back. But the other elevation is one, when you go further south. So this is the drive that would connect. I know that Park and Poplar came through about a week or so ago. So this is where their drive would connect. So this is the one that you would look through, and you would have that second drive. We've got all areas of outdoor seating and areas that come off the trail and utilize. Back to the site plan and take any questions. Like I said, this is already zoned. Our simple request would be to move the building a little bit further north where that pond is, and then also the additional unit count. That's it, Councilor Tam.
Thank you, Councilor. I still want to call you Councilor George. Yeah, Councilor Wanniger.
David, just real quick, how much is the estimated appraisal of the AV for this development proposed to be around? If you, yeah, if you add everything in, it's, it's well over $100 million. Okay. And I know we talked about the park area along the pond and stuff like that. I expressed my opinion on that. I'm not in favor of any other parks within the, within the city of Westfield. We're looking for more larger parks and amenities like that. So not, not looking for that to be something that the town or the city would take over. And appreciate you taking into account a lot of our input up to date so far, so thank you.
Are you asking for financial assistance in terms of TIF on this?
Yes, we're working with economic development staff that would be coming through a few, over the next couple of months for future approvals.
Okay. And what, what portion of that TIF is for what, parking garage?
Yes, sir. Parking garage, and then also, we do have the road, the spine road and utilities. So it would be the parking structured, and then also some of the infrastructure.
Okay. I think I may express this when we met, but, and I think I've expressed this to nearly everybody that wants TIF funds for parking garages. I would really, really emphasize that if the city's putting in money for parking garages, that the residents of Westfield get to park there for free.
I understand. And we'll take that guidance and also economic development's guidance. And we're hearing the same thing, at least for certain time periods.
Any other comments on this evening? For those of you wondering why I called David Counselor George. David, you were the longest-serving counselor on Fishers, 19, 19 or 20 years?
20 years.
Just a few years, so. But also, I think you started when Fishers was 38,000 people, so.
I was there in 96, so it was probably 10.
10, yeah, 10,000, so. But I do appreciate, like Counselor Wanniger stated, that your willingness, and frankly, your entire leadership team's willingness to take a lot of input already, which we greatly appreciate, and we look forward to working with you throughout this project.
We understand this is step one, there's.
Yep. Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on, we have ordinance 2473, which is the ordinance of the city of Westfield, Indiana, amending traffic regulations of the city of Westfield. We have a presentation by Mr. Pierce.
Yes, thank you, counselors. For the record, Michael Pierce, city engineer with Public Works. So I'll keep my comments brief on this tonight. But for those of you who aren't aware, we typically do an annual update to our traffic ordinance. This, for several reasons. One is to update things like speed limits, make things enforceable as far as stop signs, signals, roundabouts, one-way streets. And then also to update our street ownership. So when we take roads over from developments that are fully constructed and out of performance bonds, we add those to our traffic ordinance as well. So obviously, there's several changes this year. I won't go through all 81 pages, but just to make a few highlights, obviously added several new subdivisions into the, into the traffic ordinance. Added our new traffic signal at 196th Street and East Street that was built this year as part of our roadway project. Added a new roundabout at 161st and Oak Road that was completed. Also, we took it, we've been, our staff has been auditing our school zones as part of an effort to standardize our signage and striping and other traffic control items on there. So we did make an effort to standardize our speed limits within Westfield to 25 miles an hour, with the exception of two that were, the speed limits on the streets are already under 25 miles an hour in those two locations. So outside of those two locations, everything is 25 miles an hour, which is consistent now across the city. And then there was a few areas where we added some parking restrictions. Most notably, probably, for many of you near Rivet Coffee at Poplar Street and Jersey Street. You've driven through there, coming on Jersey Street and trying to turn onto Poplar. You've probably realized that during the busy hours, it's pretty limited sight distance. So we want to try to make an effort to improve that and make that a safer intersection. But also, some, at the, at the request of some citizens and some, and some HOAs, we had some restrictions on Geren at Mystic Rock, and then as well as at Springdale Farms subdivision, so. With that, just, this is just an introduction, but happy to take any questions on this.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Any questions this evening?
Other than the, the speed limit reduction for the school zones, were there any speed limit reductions anywhere else?
No, we did not have any speed limit reductions anywhere.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Next up is ordinance 2475, which is common counsel of the city of Westfield, Indiana, authorizing and establishing the boundaries of two municipal riverfront development areas. This evening, we have Ms. Lauren Gillingham Teague making a presentation on these.
And I'll kind of start with a little legal overview, if that works for you. I'll let Lauren actually explain what's before you, but I'll talk a little bit about the riverfront districts in general. So Indiana law allows the city to create riverfront development project areas by resolution or ordinance. These areas must be within a certain distance from a river or lake, and the project area must be funded with both state and city funds. And if a permit's going to be issued by the ATC, it has to be within an economic development area or a similar renewal or development areas. There's six or seven listed out in statute. Once these areas are established, the ATC can issue unlimited one-way, two-way and three-way non-transferable permits to restaurants in these areas without regard for, like, typical permit quota restrictions. Last time I checked, I think the fee was $1,000, but I haven't checked recently. Once one is established, the ATC shall consider, but doesn't have to follow, the city's recommendation. Just because the city recommends one doesn't necessarily mean that a permit will be issued. It's still up to the ATC. And the city has actually already created one riverfront development project area. The Grand Junction Riverfront Development Project Area, that was done in 2018. And there is a committee established that reviews those applications and makes decisions and sends recommendations to the ATC. This ordinance before you would establish two new riverfront development project areas. So there would be three in total in the city, and I'll let Lauren go into more detail about these specific areas and why these are being requested.
Thank you, Caitlin.
Thank you, Caitlin. You spoke way more confidently on that than I ever could have. All right. Might not rotate these. Yeah, these maps were drafts that I meant to remove. We'll go with it. Just pretend they're all one color. All right, so for the record, Lauren Gillingham Teague, senior planner with the Community Development Department. As Caitlin mentioned, the item before you is the first reading of an ordinance creating two new riverfront districts. One around the Grand Park area, shown here in purple. And the other expanding upon the city's existing downtown riverfront district. The existing district is shown here in this light green. And the other colored parcels would be either automatically included or eligible for inclusion if added to an EDA. So the idea here, the Grand Park addition was obvious with all the development happening. Any way that we can aid in, in development, be it with liquor licenses or, or policies we're interested in doing. And similar, similarly with the downtown. As Caitlin mentioned, this previous riverfront district was developed in 2018, and a lot of development has kind of moved to the south with Grand Millennium here, and then Lantern Commons, and even over here to the east. The radius is all around named creeks, so no drainage ditches or anything shady. Yeah, I don't know really what else to say. I'm happy to answer any questions.
So where's the expansion area? What do you, what's the request here on this map?
So on this map, so essentially, the ordinance would be allowing the, the noted colors, these parcels, to be part of this riverfront district. So they're simultaneously in this radius, within a certain distance from a named creek, and within an economic development area or EDA. So these purple-green-blue shades, these are already within EDAs. So passing this ordinance would allow them to apply directly to the ATC for this, this liquor license. These orange areas are eligible parcels that are suitable for development, kind of ripe for development but aren't yet in EDAs. This just kind of establishes areas where if in the future we were to establish an EDA, these parcels could then go to the ATC for that same liquor license.
And I'll add that the statute reads that the permit premises must be within an EDA or a similar area. So I drafted the ordinance to say that we would never recommend something that isn't in one of those areas yet.
John, did you have a question on the other map as well, or?
Yeah, could you bring the other map up as well, just for review again?
Yeah, would it be?
Why she's clarifying that, Counselor Dart, I, I think the map, there's a radius that you're not clearly seeing on here around those.
Yeah.
Watersheds. So that is what we can put the river district in. So that is what we can put the river district in. Does that help clarify? I don't think it shows.
Yeah, it'd be great to see a bigger map.
Right.
Of the purple line that's running around the outside of that.
Lauren, I know you have that map because I've, I've walked through that with you. If you could bring that to the next council meeting or even, I mean, I'm sure Councilor Dar will be in the City Services Building before the next meeting. If he could take a look at that, that's actually pretty helpful comparatively speaking, just a small PDF here.
Yeah, let me know. I'll pull up my GIS model and show you.
So the purple properties, once this is established, the Grand Park River District, those will automatically be allowed to go through the TTB and get out and get liquor license or for second or third.
Not the TTB, you're thinking about your business.
ATC.
I'm following you completely.
And then the orange parcels, well, what, so are those individually have to go to the city to become part of the EDA or how do those get incorporated?
Yes, so these were just placeholder maps. I meant to, to put the correct maps in here and there was a delay in getting them updated. But any of these TIF districts, so purple, green, red, lighter blue, lighter yellow, anything that's not this light green or this light orange, they, they are automatically, if this ordinance is passed, able to go to ATC. But yeah, anything in the orange, so say this property owner decides to develop, they, they want to go with some kind of restaurant concept, they could go to the city and say it would be really helpful if we were included in an EDA for this, this reason. So yes, that is correct.
Any additional questions this evening? This is a first reading, so it is purely an introduction this evening. So we'll move on to our next item, which is ordinance 2476, which is the common counsel of the city of Westfield, Indiana, authorizing and approving additional appropriations of funds from the operating balances of the ARPA 2021 COVID Recovery Fund, Road and Street Improvement Fund and the Sports Campus Operating Fund. Our deputy mayor this evening, Daniel Carey-Tolan, will make a brief presentation.
Good evening. I'll make this quick for you as this is the last item on the agenda. So before you, you do have a additional appropriation for three different funds. Again, this is just the first reading. This will come back before you for adoption consideration on December 23rd. So the first one is the ARPA. This was approved by the previous council with some considerations. And so this is just to clean up and close out the ARPA funds of a little over $2.8 million and that will be put towards the 32 Stormwater Project. So we're just spending that down. It's clean and simple. The $253,000 for Grand Park, that is to close out the year as it's gone a little longer than what we thought. And that was to pay the bills and employees' salaries through December. And then you have $11.5 million and that is the 32 project and through the Road and Street Improvement Fund. This is a rollover from last year. The funds are there and they just didn't have the contract active at that time. So it's, the money's there.
So the $253,000 is for which month? Just, is it October, November, December?
No, it's just December.
Just December?
Yep, just December. So we had enough funds to carry through because they were pretty tight and lean on items and through Marla and Trinion, we, we decided we didn't need additional funds. This is just a really for December.
And there shouldn't be a request for January at this point?
No.
Okay. And then the $11.5 million, what's, what's specific?
This is for the 32.
Yeah, what specific project, I mean, projects will be happening on State Road 32 with those dollars?
Yeah, for the record, John Nail, Director of Public Works. That's for the State Road 32 Reconstruction Project. So from, from Poplar to East Street in our downtown area, it's a half-mile reconstruction project. That's what those funds are for.
I mean, so underground, why, I mean, what, just anything associated with?
Full reconstruction of the storm water. So there's additional inline detention. There's a culvert replacement project as part of that project, pre-substantial improvements to our storm drainage system in the downtown area as part of that project.
Okay, so these funds as well as the ARPA funds?
The, the ARPA funds are specific to storm water improvements. The $11.5 is for road reconstruction. So that would include pavement, curbs, sidewalks, things of that nature.
Okay, and when do the, do those funds, the $11.5, have to be used within a certain period of time?
Nope. The, the reason we're requesting this additional appropriation, we received our invoice from NDOT to pay our portion of that 32 project. And so we want to pay that invoice out as soon as possible.
But the ARPA funds had to be claimed by the end of the year.
Had to be encumbered, encumbered by the end of '24 and spent by the end of '26, correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So just a additional clarification, but I can answer additional questions that you may have. So that, there's going to be two items that you are going to have a public hearing on tonight. On the 23rd, you're going to do another public hearing on the 32 project for the Road and Street Improvement Fund as that's being advertised tomorrow. But the ARPA and the Grand Park were already advertised for a public hearing tonight.
So we need to conduct two separate public hearings, two separate times, or can we do it consecutively?
No, you can have, just do the single. Yes, it was published as one. It was published as one, so you can just do one for the Grand Park and the ARPA.
Actually, Jonathan, I'd hate for you to have to walk all the way back up here, but I do have a question for you.
It's part of the wellness program of Westfield, so.
So on the topic of those ARPA funds and everything, and I was looking for this last week and couldn't find it, but I think I found it now, but it says construction for State Road 32 is supposed to be completed by the end of next year. And by looking at the road today, I don't see how that's possible. Is those ARPA funds going to be able to be spent during that, by, by 2026?
We're spending them by paying NDOT our portion of the project. So that, they are leaving the city and being spent to NDOT to pay an invoice.
Okay. Has NDOT done an updated schedule on this recently because?
We just had a pre-construction meeting actually today on the project. And so we do think it's, the storm sewer system certainly will be, will be completed by the end of '26 based on our contractor's schedule we saw today. I don't think though, to be clear, I don't think that the, well, I don't want to speak on ARPA. I'm not an expert there, but regardless, the storm sewer system should be in place by the end of '26, yes.
All right.
And the ARPA funds is for the storm water.
Okay, thank you.
Any other conversation this evening? We need to open up a public hear, a public hearing on the Grand Park and ARPA sections of this ordinance. So we'll open up public comment this evening at 8:15. Seeing no one rushing the stage. We'll close the public hearing at 8:16, according to my phone. We'll move, frankly, that concludes our business this evening. We do have some city council comments, updates. Victor, would you like to give us an update on the APC?
Yeah, give an update from last week's APC meeting on our consent agenda. We had the new Shamrock Springs Elementary, Lifetime Fitness there at the northwest corner of town, 146. And then items of business, we took action on Clayborne Farms, also known as Kimballwick, and Woodward East PUD. And then public hearing items, we had Park and Poplar, which will be actually coming to a vote at our workshop meeting next week. And then also a Grand Universe public hearing that will be at a workshop meeting come next month. That's all.
Thank you. Any other council comments this evening? I did personally want to thank the Westfield welcome team and the overall team for a great event this past weekend, lighting the Christmas tree and so forth and a great amount of community involvement from all our different musical programs throughout our entire school system, most importantly, holiday traditions for many families as well. I would be remiss as well to not mention and thank the Community Health Network, their groundbreaking today. It was just a small $335 million project in the city of Westfield, which we continue to encourage, but is a great aspect, a great amenity to have that type of significant continued investment from a healthcare sector along US 31, but it also furthers development further north and as we look to truly take a full advantage of our key asset of US 31 as well. But $335 million doesn't happen every single day, but it does in Westfield, so, which is a fantastic day for, for many of us as we look for the future as well. Does the mayor have any comments to share?
No, he doesn't. Or do I?
Very good, as you, as it should be. The, could we have a motion to adjourn?
Submit.
Thank you. We have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Sign?
Oh, as we always do.
Anybody thirsty?
Jesus Christ, yes.